Well, I just got the... A statement now.
Well, I don't, I didn't see anything.
Chair?
I didn't either.
Bill? Good morning, colleagues and audience members. My name is Ed Weisner. I am the chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee for the City Council. We are here this morning to conduct our seventh voting session on tax amendments to City Council Bill 12 that's 0152, which is Transform Baltimore Zoning. There are electronic files are being made available on the City Council's website. The draft amendments can be downloaded from the bill file page by inputting the following link into your web browser, HTTPS backslash backslash Baltimore dot legisstar dot com. Also, a copy of the draft amendments has also been placed in the bill folder located in the executive secretary's office here at City Hall. My name is Notana Austin. I encourage, I encourage everyone to visit the City Council's website to stay updated on the bill. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the proposed amendments, page by page. We will vote on as much as we can during today's session. Public testimony will not be allowed during the voting session. In regards to city agencies may be questioned about particular amendments being discussed by the committee. We are joined by my colleagues. To my far left is Councilwoman Ricky Spector. To her right is Councilman Nick Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To Councilman Mosby's right is Councilman Bill Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Seating across from Councilman Henry is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. Second to my left is Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To my left is Councilman Jim Craft, who's the vice chair of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're also joined by Annie Smalling from the mayor's office, and also Angela Gibson, who's here representing Mayor Stephanie Rollins Blake. Also, we have our, we have our Kara Kuntz and Paul Plymouth representing President of the City Council, Jack Young.
Thank you.
We also have Mr. John Willis, sitting next to Kara Kuntz, who is the legal counsel for the committee. And to my right is Ms. Jennifer Coats.
Thank you, Ms. Coats.
Who is my, I wanted to say who is my foundation. Thank you. The one grand law I have is could you please turn off your cell phones, smartphones, Androids, whatever, or put it on mute to give, vibrate, to give the committee the respect and courtesy to discuss and vote on the amendments? If you would like to contact the committee, please mail correspondence to Office of Council Services. Attention to Jennifer Coats at 100 North Holiday Street, Baltimore, Maryland, 21202. Or you can email Jennifer at Jennifer dot Coats at BaltimoreCity.gov. Before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge receipt of some communications. We have from Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. Also, we have some agency amendments from Lori Feinberg. We also have Nicholas Taylor-Gyros. And also from the Baltimore Development Work Group. So that takes care of the correspondence. So we got, so, committee members, we are ready to vote. We finished Title VII, and now we are on Title VIII. And we will start with, this is technical, so I'll just announce it, right? Yeah, well, first of all, this is T 366, which was Page 137, Line 30. This was a technical amendment. We already voted on it, all the technical amendments, right? Yeah?
We did accept.
You accept. The next one is T 367, Page 138, Line 12. That is Landscape Manual. That was Councilwoman Clark's amendment that goes into landscape. Do we, we already voted to withdraw that?
This committee pretty well scrapped the idea of having any direct supervision of landscape and design.
Okay. But I think...
Therefore, I'm going to be a dead horse again.
Okay, but you already...
I'm going to move to withdraw this.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the withdrawal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, it's withdrawing. But Councilwoman, we already voted on that. Did we, did we already vote on your withdrawal?
No, we voted on a related issue that was previous.
Okay, so, all right, okay.
So unless I'm mistaken, which is always possible.
Okay, okay.
We basically, well, I mean, basically, the council voted significantly against authority of talent, of whatever, about our overseeing these manuals whatsoever.
I just wanted clarification.
And this is redundant, like beating a dead horse.
All right, thank you.
I'm referring to Page 36.
Yeah, we are, we are now on T 370, Page 139. This is, Page 139, yeah, Page 139, Line 8. And this regards to definition, Councilman Craft?
I'm going to, we don't have emotion on it, but I'm going to go to the other thing right now, right? Okay, I think that, I think that one...
Oh, this is definition.
Yeah, no, this is not one I'm, I think this one fails for lack of emotion, but the, what I would like to say, Mr. Chairman, is as we're moving through this now, and we're getting to certain standards, I would like to move to defer any references to design standards until our next voting session. It's my understanding that staff is working on some language with regard to design standards, looking at that similarly to how we looked at landscape, and that, and that'll be circulated to the committee between this voting session and next voting session. So I moved it to defer that, okay?
Moved by Councilman Craft, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion passed. So that covers Title, we're finished with Title VIII. Now we are on Title IX, which is Design Standard from Planning. We did all that, right? Yeah. What, T 369, Page 139, Line, Page 1, yeah, Line 7 to 11. Councilwoman Clark?
Mr. Chairman and members of the committee...
You gotta use the mic, make sure you use the microphone, this is being recorded.
Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, I have a replacement, these two, 369 and 373, if you're for one, you're for the other, they're companions. Basically, they talk about, can I, can I, I'm sorry, I just, I'll be done in a minute. It's about the conversion of row houses and multifamily houses from, to multifamily, to single-family houses to multifamily. It has to do, both amendments have to do whether, about whether R 7 and R 8 are prohibited from being converted or not. And in a compromise with the president's office, which I greatly appreciate, the president's office does not want to prohibit conversion in those two districts, but is happy to support the current practice, which is that in R 7 and in R 8, the subdivision into more than a single unit would require conditional use by the city council. We do that now, and basically, they're saying, let's stay the course. So I do have, and you have in front of you, the substitute amendments that I wrote last night, one of a set, and I'm really pleased. I mean, I'm very happy about it. It's status quo, but it's a good status quo. So 5 and 6, it's prohibited. 7 and 8, you need an ordinance. 9 and 10, go for it.
Okay, I have a question before you make your motion. On the next page, you said, is T 373 is a pair? What about T 372?
Oh, that's a, I think that's a redundancy. Wait a minute, I thought I put that on the list.
Huh?
72 is on the withdrawal list.
It's withdrawn, it's redundant. It's on your withdrawn list.
Okay, T 372 and T 373?
No, not 3.
Not 3, just 72?
Yeah, 373.
Okay, all right. Okay, go ahead, you want to go with your motion?
Okay, I only have two amendments in this entire title. These are the two.
Okay.
The other is redundant. It's a repetition.
Use the mic.
You need to use the microphone, Councilwoman.
Sure. So basically, T 373 is basically a restatement in a few pages later of the same concept that, it just says the same thing as the first one, it just says it in a different place. I'd like to, if I may, I'd like to, well, I'll do it one at a time. I'd like to move T 369.
Okay.
As amend, I mean, the amended version.
Yeah, moved by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Craft. Councilman Weisner votes yes, Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft, yes. Councilman Branch?
She's not here.
Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby, yes. We have six yes, with one absent. The motion passes. Now we are on T 368.
I don't even have the...
That's a definition, do we have a...
370, I'd like to move T 373.
You're jumping, you're, I'm on T...
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you're not gonna, okay.
Okay, we're good, we're good. There's no motion, Phil? Okay, T 371 is a typo, that's Agency Planning Department?
Yeah, technical.
Technical?
Oh, I see. Thanks.
Don't have to move it, it's technical.
Yeah. T 729?
Technical.
Is technical. T 730 is technical. T 852, I'll just go there, T 852 is Design Standards, we already took a vote on that. T 723?
What is it?
Design Standards, thank you. T 720 is Design Standards?
Yes, and 720, 716.
You gotta use the microphone.
I don't know what I have done with my...
I believe they are, 720 is a repeat of the prior, but they're all Design Standards, so I guess it doesn't...
Can you repeat that for all of us? Which Design Standards are on the...
7, 723, 720, 716, and 724 are all Design Standards.
Okay, all right, thank you. And T 7, T 373?
That's Mary Pat.
That's Mary Pat, we already voted on that. So we gotta, she gotta withdraw that?
On your, on your sheet that says Alternative Amendments to Title IX, II, which means Page, the second of many alternatives I wrote, um, thank you, moved.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just let me note that there is a typo in the word conversion, so when it gets, you know, when it gets sent up the line...
Yeah, we can, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Okay. So you moved it, Councilman Craft seconded it. Councilman Weisner votes yes, Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft is yes. Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. We have six yes, with one absent. 372, that is, that was withdrawn, thank you. We're now on, huh? Did we vote on that?
No, we didn't.
We didn't vote on that? Okay, so on T 3, thank you, T 372, do we have a motion to withdraw?
Oh, motion to withdraw.
Okay, do we have a second? Councilwoman, Councilwoman Middleton, all those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion passes.
Mr. Chair?
We're now on, still on Title IX. Councilman Henry?
Yeah, thank you. When, if we have a whole list of withdrawals, like we do with Councilwoman Clark, can we just do one motion to withdraw everything on her list?
We did that, we did that previously, but we haven't, we didn't do it on...
We should, do you want to just move to withdraw your, the list that you presented with us today? That way, we don't have to do it on each?
Well, we did that, didn't we? Did we already do that?
We didn't do the new list.
Yes, we didn't do the new list.
Okay.
Yeah, so just move to withdraw your whole list.
I'd like to move to withdraw my list as...
You gotta, Councilwoman, you gotta use the microphone.
I'd like to move to withdraw the list that I have submitted of withdrawals to the committee.
Okay.
Whatever it says.
Title 11 and 12? Yeah. Councilwoman, you have it in front of you, you want me to do it, or you want to do it? You start with Title 11?
Just Title 11 and 12.
Oh, my God. No, I wrote it down. It's in your package.
It's in your package.
It's just Title 11 and 12.
Does it's 11 and 12?
Right.
I'll read it all, you have it.
Which ones were...
11 and 12.
11 and 12.
We've done the rest.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Well, that's, I mean...
Go ahead.
Or else I'm dead.
I know, go ahead, go ahead and read them.
In the microphone.
Dead or hurt?
Microphone. You gotta use the microphone.
I'd like to move the, deferral, or withdrawal. In Title 11 of T 630, in Title 12, all of these have T dash before the numbers, 615, 388, 387, 397, 415, 416, 616, 422.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of withdrawal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion's passed. Okay, let's go now with, Councilman Henry, are you good now?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, now we are on T 728, Page 151, this is Agency Planning Commission. Do I have a motion to move?
What is the, what is the language?
Clarify permission applied to OR as well as R zones.
What's the language of the motion?
Lori?
We can give you more specific language, but essentially, the, there are standards for conversions in Title IX, 701, and we are just suggesting that those, you add OR 1 and OR 2 to the list of standards. The standards are that you need a minimum yard size, building size, et cetera, and those same standards should apply in the OR districts.
So you just want to wait for the language you want to...
And we can't.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I apologize for this, but someplace in this hearing, I must go out of, or go out of order and withdraw a map amendment that I told people I would withdraw.
What?
Now, I'm not asking you to interrupt what you're doing now, but please, may we, let me do that before...
Yeah, at the end, at the end.
At the end.
Remind, et cetera, problem.
Please remind me that when the end comes to do this, okay? Pray to God, really.
Okay, what are you going to do with Agency Planning on this?
We don't have the specific language, I don't think we can vote on the concept.
You can get it to us?
We'll defer for language.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to move, defer? Okay, moved by Councilman Henry, seconded by Councilwoman Middleton, all those in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, it's deferred.
731 is...
It's the same?
731 is related, yes.
You say it's the same, right?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion?
To defer.
Moved by Councilwoman Middleton, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Craft, all those in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, it's deferred. So you will have this, okay, all right.
We'll add it to the sheet that we created.
Okay. T 720, T 721?
Technical.
Page 152 is a technical?
That's a good one.
That completes Title IX. We are now on Table 10, T 735.
That's a table amendment?
Oh, we went to 721, we went into, are we on 10?
We're in 10.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
So we just got to move that. Okay. The next one is T 744, that's also a Design Standard, correct?
It's a Design Standard.
Okay. And then, T 745?
This would...
This would be a table amendment?
This is Table 2?
Yes.
Okay.
For, move to defer, move, move to defer.
That's a table amendment?
Yep, move to defer.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion moved by Councilman Henry, who seconds? Councilwoman Clark? All those in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, move to defer. T 741?
Thanks.
Is, um...
I don't think that's Design, let me double check.
This is Planning, Planning Commission?
Oh, I'm sorry, that is a Design Standard.
That's a Design Standard?
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, God, this is...
And now we are on another Planning Commission, T 808?
That is...
Also Design.
That's also Design, okay.
Design? 808? That's Parking.
That's Parking?
Oh, I'm sorry, it says Page 162, which is Design Standards. It may have been on the wrong page number, hold on. It's about street, all street parking.
That's another title.
10503.
She has looked at it.
I believe it is still in the Design section of 10503. A portion of it.
Street level design, secondary...
Yes.
It does sound like Design.
A portion of it is definitely in the Design section.
Definitely, if it's on 162, it's in Design.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's on Page 163, 164.
Okay, so this is Design. So we agree it's Design Standard?
Yes.
Okay, do we, do we have a...
Mr. Chairman, if it go, I mean, Design in this chapter goes all the way to the bottom of Page 165, so anything in those pages should be deferred. Instead of having everybody, you know, looking at individual issues, I promise you, it's all Design.
No, it's not. Mr. Chair?
It's called that.
Okay, now, Councilman Henry?
If you get to Page, Page, if you go to 164, there's a section, I, Parking and Access, Lines 31 through 4.
That's not Design.
That's not Design, and that appears to be what the language in 808 is referencing.
But it's...
It's Line, Line 32 of Page 164. The C 5 district is exempt from the parking requirements of the code. I raised this issue because two, the next couple of amendments after 808 speak to the same issue. So I would suggest that rather than deferring this particular amendment, 808, we just have no motion on it and address the issue in one of the subsequent amendments.
Okay, well, help me out, we'll go, so we're on T 808, what's the other ones?
The next three, T 8, 380, 374, and 375 speak to this issue, and I suspect that Ms. Kuntz can speak to the council president's amendment of 380.
Second.
Okay, so you moved, Councilman Henry?
No, actually, what I was suggesting was that there just be no motion on 808.
808 failed for lack of...
And just let it fail for lack of motion, and we can take up the issue subsequently.
And that goes with the other ones, too.
Yeah, I think...
Just 808?
Okay.
All right.
For clarification, it is under a section that's Design Standards, but if the council wants to pull it out of Design Standards as not, we treated it as a, in its entirety, as Design-related issues, because that's how it was presented to us initially. So you may want to suggest that the entire Line 31 on Page 164 down to, certainly the line, the bottom of Page 164 and possibly the beginning of 165, be deleted from Design Standards, and then deal with those issues. Because right now, they're in the whole subsection that is Design Standards.
Correct. It goes all the way to the bottom of Page 165. So, Mr. Chairman, should we take a second to put together on...
Councilwoman, you gotta...
I'm just going to take it out of here so we can hand it back and forth, okay? Can we take a second to get this out of Design Standards? Or it'll disappear from our view forever, and we can move it someplace like, someplace else, but I think we should. It would start at, well, where would it start?
Say it would start at Line 31, Page 164. Parking and Access.
And where would it end, after Pratt Street?
As drafted, it would probably end on Line 6 of Page 165.
All right, Mr....
That's the subsection.
Where would, I mean, where in the world would we put it? It's about parking, and...
It is limited to C 5, which is downtown. So it could simply be a separate, you know, a standalone subsection under the 10503 that says, "In the C 5 District." It is essentially a special standard for downtown, and that is C 5, so I would suggest it just go, yes.
Title 10?
10503, which would be un... 10-503, which would be under line 5 on page 162.
I'm going to do the first part of this. Can you say the words for the second part? Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I would propose and move that we take, remove the following lines from design standards in this Title 10. And those lines would be page 164, lines 31 through 40; page 165, line 1 through 6; and move them into...
I would say, what, page 162?
162.
Insert after line 5.
162 after line 5.
Okay. 10-503?
Yes.
In the C5 district?
Yes.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second. There's a question on the motion, Councilman Kraft?
I mean, you're saying move them to into, on page 162, after line 5?
All right. They apply to "in the C5 district."
They're still design standards.
Now, if you do it above... If you do it above the...
These are still under design standards.
Oh, oh, I think if you... Yeah.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yeah, subtitle... You're correct. Subtitle 5, going back to page 158, is all design standards. I guess you would have to do it on page 158 after line 18. Taking it out of subtitle 5.
Better than where... It's better than...
Unless...
Anyplace else we can find it at a moment's notice.
I mean, unless you want to defer it until we sort of parse where the design standards will land.
Well, I don't think it can be in the design standards. If we're pulling it out of the design... One part of the... If we're pulling it out of one section of the design standards, we can't put it into another section of the design standards. That makes no sense.
Oh, yeah. Got it. So then it would need to go directly after page 158, after line 18? Before the design standards start?
Wait a minute.
Or, yeah, I think Patrick's got a good idea there. It could be in 10-601, Other Applicable Standards.
That sounds like a good category. Where's that?
Page 165.
That would make more sense.
It's essentially a special set of standards for parking in downtown. So if the subtitle 6 was "other," that would be...
Basically, what's happening, design standards is not under our control whatsoever.
Councilwoman, you need to use the microphone. Oh, you do have it? Okay, I'm sorry.
Surprise!
She got me. Okay. I stand corrected.
What was I going to say, besides that?
This is... Would this... Could this be used in off-street parking?
Again, it's up to the council. I think for the user's convenience, since these are special rules for downtown, it's more readable to have it in the section, the title that refers to downtown, which is C5.
Except that it says right here, it refers in this section, it says "Other Applicable Standards," and then you go to 10-604 on page 166, "Applicable Standards." It says, "Standards governing off-street parking and loading are set forth in Title 16. Off-street parking and loading..."
You've got my vote, Patrick.
Wouldn't it be sense... Make sense to have all the parking in one place?
That could work as well.
Okay. So what do you recommend? Putting the Title 16?
I recommend that we move it to Title 16 in the appropriate spot in Title 16 so that all of the parking is in one place. The reference is here.
I will be glad to withdraw my motion, Councilman. Okay, now.
Okay. I move to move page 164, lines 31 to 40, and page 165, lines 1 through 6, to the appropriate lines in Title 16 dealing with off-street parking and loading. And then we'll let staff place them in the appropriate part in off-street parking and loading, rather than sitting here trying to figure out where lines are.
Second. That leads... That's Titles away.
You second?
Yeah.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Kraft.
I didn't think that's what you were saying.
Second by Councilwoman Clark.
The same idea. Get rid of it.
Councilwoman Reisinger votes yes.
Yeah, kick it down a little.
Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft, yes. Councilwoman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yeah.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilwoman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. Motion passes. And that was T 808, right? Now we are on T 380, page 164, line 33. This is the President's Amendment.
Move the President's Amendment.
No, no.
The same... Council President?
We just moved it to Title 16.
This is a design standard? Okay, so we already voted on that, right?
Some of these will go away if the design standards go away, but like this will go in Title 16.
Okay, you got to explain.
If we're going to put all the parking in Title 16, then this amendment needs to go in Title 16.
So all of these got to go in a Title 16?
Yeah.
So from 380 to 379 has got to go in Title 16?
I think that's the total of them.
All the way over to 102?
No, just that one here.
Just these?
Yeah.
Okay. They either go into Title 16 or the design standards. Okay. I'm going to make an announcement. They go to Title 16 or be... Or send the design standards as a...
Ogun just released the idea of transportation involved.
Councilman Kraft?
Mr. Chairman?
Committee members, he's got a...
Mr. Chairman, as to amendments, T 380, 374... Folks, if you can listen to this, 380, 374, 375, 376, 377, 378, and 379. These amendments apply to either what we just did, the parking lot, or to design standards, one or the other. So I'm going to move, at this time collectively, that we move the appropriate sections to Title 16 and that we defer on design standards pursuant to the prior motion, and they'll be handed over to staff to do as we've talked about earlier.
Second. Moved by Councilman Kraft, seconded by Councilwoman Clark. Councilman Reisinger votes yes. Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft, yes. Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby, yes. We have six yes with one absent. Motion passes. Now we are on T 746, which is technical. The next one is T 740, page 165, Planning?
Design.
Design standard? Councilwoman Clark?
Point of information. Point of information. Is a setback a design standard or a bulk and yard regulation?
This is a special district setback for the... Limited to the Howard Street corridor, and it's actually indicated on the maps. It is a over and above the required setback of the base zone.
So it's more intent...
It's more restrictive than the base setback.
Than the code?
Yes, and it's limited to a specific geographic area. It's actually mimicking an existing urban renewal requirement there, and it's moving it for convenience into the zoning code.
Okay, because that's one of the things that concerns me about design standards is it's so easy for them to fall into, you know, bulk and setback and yard requirements, because after all, that's part of the design, and then all of a sudden, it's in some code that we're enforcing but we have never seen. So that makes sense, what you say, then. Thanks.
T 733 restricts size of medical clinics in C1.
This should be a table?
I'm sorry?
I think this should be moved to the tables.
Yeah, this is a table. Right.
Move to defer to table.
Right. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. T 734, and this is a table.
Yes.
Is there a motion to move to tables?
Table.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. T 739, the... It looks like this is a table.
Table and design standards, yes.
Okay, there's a combination.
Hold on, now I've lost track of where we are.
And to send off to the limbo called design standards.
So is there a second?
I'll second most of that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. T 749.
You skipped two.
That's a table.
I think you skipped two. 689?
749 on my sheet.
There's two.
I have 739, and I have 749.
No, there's two in between.
739 and then 749.
Yep. That's when I have 739 and 749.
689 and 90.
689's next.
749.
You're fine, they're just slightly out of order.
Yeah, I said 689, 749, and 689.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I just said.
Yeah, we just agreed to keep the...
I don't know what they're... Right? T 749. It's a table.
Asking for a summary.
Okay. Is there a motion on a table? Motion... It's a table amendment. Is there a motion?
What's it, 749?
749.
Second.
There is a piece of 749 that's in the text, but...
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. 689.
Okay, this is SBBA. I think it's in text. Is it not? Pardon me, it's not mine, but I'm interested. Where is it? 168?
Page 168.
11204 and...
Oh, yeah, this is text.
Title 11.
Okay. It's Title 11, page 168, and the first one is... I got it. On line 21. Let me make sure. Oh, gee, is it?
Believe it's delete the word "office" on line 21.
Wait a minute, hold on.
I don't... Wait a minute.
Right. And then the next one is research and development.
One person at a time.
Okay, I have the floor. I'll give it up to anyone who can do a better job, which won't be hard at this. Okay. Okay. I got it. There is a motion to delete references to offices in 11204 and 11205. Therefore, where they are is line 21 and line 30. Okay. So basically, let's go to... That's the amendment. The second... The next amendment, if I may, 690, recommends deleting references to research and development facilities in those two sections. Therefore, here's how the amendment works out, if we take them one at a time. Here's the cumulative effect. Page 168, line 21, delete the phrase "as well as office and research development." Page 168, line 30, delete the phrase "as well as office and research development facility." Oh, facilities. Okay. So that's what it is. And I'd like to move approval. It's SBBA. Here's why. Here's why.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Do we have a second? Wait a minute. Do we have a... You just made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, but you're right.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Here's why, for both these proposals, which cumulatively take out one phrase. So basically, it's about... It's like light industrial district. This is all about MIZAD and all the issues to keep the manufacturing segment that we've designated of our communities free from getting in people's way, residential way, and small business way, in ways that make it very difficult for the industries to function. Therefore, this amendment coming from South Baltimore Business Association says that light industrial uses, that is, one I... Or I1, excuse me. Light industrial uses are enclosed, low-intensity, non-nuanced light fabrication and assembly-type manufacturing, as well as office and research development facilities, with little to no outside impacts. Well, they... You got it. He liked the offices and the research facilities out of there. And look, it's the use table that's going to dominate, but language is important. Words count.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on T 689, which is part one of that. So let's do part one of the motion by Councilwoman Clark and a second by Councilman Henry. Okay? We have a vote sheet on that, 689.
689.
Okay. All right. Councilman Reisinger?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Kraft, yes. Councilman Branch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Seven votes, affirmative, no negative, no absence, no abstention. Okay. We have Amendment 690, and we have a motion.
Same difference?
We have a motion in favor.
Move to approve approval.
We already have that. Motion by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilman Henry. Councilwoman Reisinger votes yes. Councilman Kraft, yes. Councilman Branch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby? Seven votes, affirmative, no negative, no absent, no abstention. Okay, that's 690. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Councilman. We are now on T-749, page 168. We already did that? Okay. That's deferred. T-832, that's, uh, planning? T-832, planning?
Yes, I think this might be in the wrong section, but let me just...
Makes reference to an 11207 that I don't have in my book.
Yeah. I think this is in the wrong section and probably somehow got moved from a 17 to a 11. Maybe that was a typo because this is a signage issue, and signage is Title 17.
Okay, all right. So it's moved by Councilman Henry, do I have a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Clark.
We'll check that, but I think it's Title 17.
We're going to defer, this is motion to defer. So we have the motion and second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes.
Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, on page, on page 169, line 4, in our meeting of August...
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry. Of September 29th, 2014?
Delete limited.
We had a consensus regarding the deletion of the word "limited" there. I would move to delete the word "limited."
Second.
Okay, so that's a MIZAD, is that...
Yeah, just the word, delete the word "limited." Microphone.
So it's moved by Councilwoman Craft? Henry, second. Councilwoman Reisinger votes yes. Councilwoman Craft?
Yes.
Councilwoman Craft, yes. Councilman Branch? Councilman Branch, yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark, yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby, yes. We have seven yes. Motion passes. That was, uh... That's a new, okay. I just want to get back on track. We're on what, T-832? T-833? Okay, T-833 is the same. Signage?
No, no, no. I, I deferred to Councilwoman Craft. I have a question about other language requested for the same statement. I, I'm sorry, I believe this is SBBA, and I believe that there is other language that SBBA is recommending in the statement that we just deleted the word "limit" from. Let me say it and see if it rings a bell with you.
Where is?
One, page 169, lines 3 to 6 represent a statement, and we have just taken the word "limit" out of it. Okay, limited. I also took notes from the same discussion and agreement that added in two places some language. So with the word "limited" off, the, it would read as follows. "The M1 Maritime Industrial Zoning District is intended to ensure the preservation of deep waterfrontage of the Port of Baltimore for maritime industrial use," add the word "industrial," "by delineating an area where maritime shipping add and maritime industrial uses can be conducted without the intrusion of non-industrial uses and where investment in maritime infrastructure is encouraged." I, I wrote those in my notes at the same time I deleted "limited." Does it ring a bell?
No. You moved...
I don't have it in my notes, but I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, I'd like to move those insertions.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilman Henry.
Not me, I turned mine off.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilman Henry. Councilwoman Reisinger votes yes. Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft, yes. Councilman Branch? Councilman Branch is yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark, yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby, yes. We have seven yes. Motion passes. Okay, so are we finished with the MIZAD or SBBA? Are we ready to move on to, are we, what's it, T-832?
Yes, similar to T-8, T-749, I believe this goes to Title 17, and I think that's our typo. It had 11 instead of 17.
So we, we have to make a motion to defer that?
I'm sorry, 832 and 8...
You already did it?
832 and 833 would be in that category.
All right. Okay, so now we're, okay, so we did 832, so now we're on T-833. So we got to make a motion to defer that? Is that right, planning?
I would say move to Title 17.
Okay, do I have a motion to defer?
Second, yeah, moved.
Moved, I need a second.
A second?
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T-833 is deferred. T-8, T-381 was from a Mr. Scott Robinson. That is a design standard, am I correct?
Yes, it is a design standard.
To, that's already, yeah, we already did that. The last, T-630, page 232, Councilwoman, are you with through that? That was withdrawal. That was withdrawal.
T-630, don't worry.
I got, let me get the list, you have the list? Hold on for one second.
630, yes, is on her withdrawal.
That was withdrawal? Okay, all right, so T-630 was a withdrawal. That concludes Title 8, 9, 10, 11. We will not be going on Title 12.
I thought we were going to defer Title 12.
So we did, we did Title 8, 9, we voted on Title 8, 9, 10, 11. We're not going to go into Title 12. So our next voting session on City Council Bill 12-0152, which was transformed Baltimore, we will be announced. I want to thank everyone, everyone for attending today's voting session, and make sure you take with you what you bought. Thank you.